I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on November 28, 2023. So our first order of business is to swear in our new colleague, Royce Peterson. Okay, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Royce, okay.
Do I come out here or I sit?
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Aye, Royce Peterson.
Aye, Royce Peterson.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties in the office of city councillor.
Discharge all the duties in the office of city councillor.
In the city of Coralville.
In the city of Coralville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Congratulations and welcome aboard. We're very excited to have you join us. Okay, so now that we have a full slate, I would do the roll call. Knudsen.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Nguyen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff members in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Knudsen.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Number five, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I think we have some folks that are wanting to address us this evening. Please step up to the mic and share your names with us and who you are with.
Thanks for the welcome this evening. I'm Pastor Tim Smith from Holy Trinity Lutheran Church up in North Liberty and corporate secretary of Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, and includes a number of Coralville residents and faith communities that are part of our interfaith coalition. I'm here with Rabbi Esther Hugenholtz-Hussoh here from Agudas Akim Congregation in Coralville, and also with Reverend Diana Smith, no relation, right? But she's the minister at the Unitarian Universalist Society here in Coralville. Each of those communities are members of Johnson County Interfaith. And we're on behalf, here on behalf of our coalition, to first of all thank the council for their previous conversations and consideration regarding a potential hate crimes ordinance in the community and adjustments to that, and to also then ask the council maybe consider either a revision of your existing ordinance or potentially a drafting of a new ordinance that will include harassment as an offense recognized that can be targeted both against individuals or against properties that individuals may own and worthy of enhanced punishment when perpetuated for the sake of intimidating residents in those communities. We have previously, over the last few years, worked with the University of Iowa's Legal Clinic to draft and to pass similar ordinances with the approval of both the police chiefs and the city councils in both Iowa City and in North Liberty. This little wonderful booklet, multi-page booklet, tells a story in great detail about that. But back in April, Rabbi Esther and I met with Kevin Olson of your city staff to talk about the possibility of revisiting this issue here in Coralville. We circled back when we stated that perhaps your police chief had some concerns or some like different ideas about maybe how they might choose to address those kinds of offenses and maybe perhaps choose them to charge them just as instances of simple misdemeanors. I don't quite think, I'm certain at all about that either the reasoning or the background behind that, but again wanted to perhaps reiterate that we really feel as a coalition that we need to send a stronger message when it comes to incidents of intimidation and hate, of hatred of particular populations within the community itself. We regret that our own busy schedules haven't quite allowed for enough further conversations with any of your city staff or with the police chief himself, but I do know that through recent other conversations they've had that perhaps there's been some different understandings that have been shared, and so we thought it's a good time to go ahead and bring this back up with you to talk about this in earnest. So I've got copies of both your current ordinance and of the one that we passed in North Liberty I can share with you if you'd like, just to compare and contrast what the differences might be therein. And the city attorney in North Liberty, Grant Leeds, is willing to work with your legal staff to work on perhaps revisiting that if it's at all desired on your behalf. I'm going to let Rabbi Esther speak to her experience here next, and then we'll have Rabbi, or excuse me, Mr. Diana come up and speak as well. So Esther, come on up.
I've never been called Easter before, but Jewish Easter, Christian Easter, whatever. We still have the better food, though. Sorry. We realize that both Iowa City and North Liberty have different levels of resources when it comes to legal staff than does Coralville. Yet with all respect to your city staff, we feel as though this kind of strengthened ordinance can get a long way to send a message that harassment in any form, whether against persons or property, is an intimidating behavior that will not be tolerated in this community. Grant Leeds, North Liberty's attorney, has indicated his willingness to work with your attorney to review and draft such an ordinance. The frequency of intimidation, hate crimes, and hate incidents in both Johnson County and the nation of both antisemitism and anti-Arab and Islamophobic sentiments have increased as of late, including the incident in Burlington, Vermont this week. And I would like to add that last year, the thing that precipitated this more personally for me is that the streets around my synagogue, including the street where I live, was targeted by neo-Nazi leaflets, and the Coralville community rallied to our support, including the mayor, for which the Jewish community extends their gratitude. And at the same time, my children should not have to find leaflets saying that Kanye West was right about the Jews with the big black swastika on them in their own street where they play so happily. And I add that as a personal testimony, both for the sake of the representation of the Jewish community and all communities who need solidarity and protection at this time. In addition to earlier hate crimes or hate incidents at Wetherby Park, both pastors Smith and I have, as I mentioned just earlier, had our neighborhoods targeted and littered with hate-filled white supremacy flyers that are clearly intended to intimidate certain populations, of which I am one, and inflame the fears of others, such that they might be emboldened to act on their fears. We seek to force them to think twice before doing so.
And I'm Reverend Diana Smith, the minister of the Unitarian Universalist Society. And so Iowa's code allows for enhanced penalties for crimes committed because of a person's race or other protected characteristic, such as religion. Harassment is a crime under the Iowa code, but as such is not an enforceable offense. This is what we seek to change. In accordance with Iowa law, the elements of hate crime under the proposed ordinance, what Pastor Tim has shared with you, the defendants are, in a court, the elements of hate crime under the proposed ordinance are that the defendant communicated with the victim with the intent to intimidate, annoy or annoy, threaten, or harm without a legitimate purpose and because of the victim's race or other characteristic included in the ordinance, including religion. It's our hope that the ordinance clearly communicates not only that diversity is welcome in our community, but that the city has our backs when someone seeks to intimidate or challenge. And we hope that this will be welcomed and acted on by the city of Coralville. It's also our hope that eventually such an ordinance will be included within the state code itself. Now, we know that that is a long-term goal. It's unlikely to happen anytime soon, yet we do believe that smaller communities, including ours here in Coralville, need to consider supporting such an ordinance first if this is ever going to happen. The communities within our county can set a pace for doing so, and when such a time is right, then we can approach the state legislature with evidence of grassroots efforts. As Pastor Tim said, we've brought copies of the ordinance that was passed last year in North Liberty, and we'd be happy to work with your attorney on next steps. On behalf of Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, thank you for listening to us.
All right. Thank you for your comments, and I definitely look forward to continuing this conversation, for sure. I really appreciate all of you coming and sharing with us this evening. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? All right. Hi, state your name, come up to the mic, state your name, and who you are with or where you live.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kristen Lansing-Stuffler. I'm here with Amber Armstrong. We are from the Forever Green Heights. It's a brand-new neighborhood in Coralville, and we want to raise an opportunity today for the city council to address what we see as a need in the community. So as I stated, we live in Forever Green Heights, and it's a growing residential neighborhood, and we currently have at least two households with larger families that as a result have more cars than garage and driveway space will allow for. And this results in cars needing to be parked on the street on occasion. So the current policy for street parking prohibits parking on the street overnight. This presents a significant challenge for families who are not in a position to have less kids or less cars. The kids need the cars to get to school, to jobs, et cetera. And the result is that they are frequently ticketed then by the police for parking on the street or for blocking the sidewalk if they are able to actually fit all of their cars in their driveway. So I think this is a somewhat unique problem in that I don't believe we need sweeping changes to the overnight parking policy in Coralville, but I do believe that the city council has an opportunity to support these larger families by allowing for permits for overnight parking exemptions. So we looked at a number of overnight parking exemption policies for different cities across the U.S. just to get an idea of how this is typically handled, and we also took into consideration some of the concerns that have been expressed by the police chief and the streets folks, and we drafted a policy, it's been shared, that we think could be a good start and a potentially elegant solution for the issue. We're hoping that you'll take this draft into consideration for the possible creation of a policy. What we're proposing essentially is an annual overnight parking exemption for passenger vehicles on residential streets for residents who have more vehicles than they have driveway or garage space. So examples of potential qualifications would include, this would only refer to passenger vehicles, so no RVs, buses, contractor trailers, that sort of thing. It could be included that the vehicles must exceed available driveway or garage space in that we wouldn't want people using their garage for storage and then asking to park their cars on the street. We saw this in a number of policies. We could include that vehicles be parked on the street adjacent to the resident's property so we don't have them parking in front of neighbors. We can include that overnight parking exemptions would be granted due to vehicles needing to be, not that they would just need to be shuffled around at the driveway. So this is really to address a need rather than a convenience issue, and we would include that vehicles would be in working order, so we don't want people, street storage for, you know, broken-down vehicles. They would have to, of course, adhere to the, you know, that overnight parking would be prohibited after a snowfall of two inches or more. Those sorts of qualifications would still need to be adhered to. So these are just some of the criteria that we looked into to ensure that this was a policy that was tailored for need rather than convenience. But I do want to state again that for these larger families, this really is a need. So we're hoping the mayor and the police chief and county attorney and council agree that this is a problem and that we, and that this is a problem that can be solved using a simple, well-crafted policy, as it has been in other communities. And we're happy to contribute to any conversations around that, supporting the potential drafting of that policy. So in summary, we just want to thank you for your time and consideration of the issue, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us and for doing your research, and yeah, we'll keep talking.
Okay. Fantastic. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening? Okay, then we will move on to item number six. So we have a public hearing for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction. So this project includes improvements of reaches one and three and Becky's Creek regions of Clear Creek, and the bids for this are due at 10:00 a.m. on January 3rd, 2024. And we did hear a nice overview of this project at the last meeting, but Sheri, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm going to give you just a quick one to qualify for our public hearing after getting it placed in the paper correctly. Apologize for that. Overview, we're looking at reach one up against the northeast quadrant of 80 and 380 interchange, Becky's Creek running through, just west of Creekside Ballpark, and the reach three is just to the southwest of where Coral Ridge Avenue comes down. Those are the areas that we're proposing to put into stream mitigation bank. We already have that approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Changes that the community will see, there will be some tree loss, they'll notice that probably the most, of trees that have grown up over the years right beside the creek and they actually are harming the creek. These will be taken out, will have riparian benched back banks, will have a lot more flood storage through this area. The creek channel will actually add additional linear feet and more sinuosity to the creek, slowing that water down, and we'll be doing lots of treatments to those curves that you can see those yellow lines, using stone toe underneath the water. You'll see a lot of natural elements above the water and underneath the water doing those treatments that will help those banks, hold those banks in place. So these are just kind of a little bit more of an overview of those areas, and we are still working on finalizing a, we have 210,000 cubic feet, cubic yards of dirt that we need to store from this area. We're finalizing, trying to get that stored very close to where it will come out, and that will be, about 80% of that will be good topsoil, so we anticipate being able to do something with that topsoil, either here amongst city projects or possibly selling it to contractors. Once that, we get that locked in, we're looking at this estimate to be right around 4.2 million, which is what we've kind of been working off the last few months.
Great. Thank you for that overview. Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address us on this agenda item? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Knudsen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, could I have the roll call, please? Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
I didn't say it loud enough, I guess. Did you? I didn't hear him.
I heard.
Okay, resolution is approved, all ayes. Number seven, West Land Use Area Master Plan Amendment. So this is a public hearing that would make some necessary amendments to this, to this master plan, and we have our community development director, Dave Johnson, here to give us an overview of what those changes would be.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. The last time this plan was amended was 2016. The proposed amendments before you today are in response to my four years working with this document, as well as development inquiries that we've received. Specifically on page 25, the West Land Use Area Corridor Commercial Zoning Framework is being proposed to be omit, is omitting subsection C, other provisional uses allowed in the C2 arterial commercial district. What this will fundamentally do is allow for convenience stores with fuel sales. This is more of an oversight, if anything, as evidenced by the fact that we've had design guidelines in this document from the beginning regulating fuel canopies. So we're just fixing that. Page 81, we are better defining architectural metal panels. There's been a lot of discussion over the years as to what the city's expectations are for that in industrial building applications, and we're clarifying that architectural metal has to have a decorative element, and corrugated or ribbed metal typical of pole buildings are not considered an architectural metal. Detached fuel canopy islands will be prohibited in front yards, and detached canopies in side and rear yards must be set back a minimum of 15 feet. A front yard in the zoning ordinance is defined as the area between the front of a building and a rotor street. And on page 90, the building type requirements for commercial office buildings are being expanded to include civic buildings. We realized when the Clear Creek Amanda School was built, we did not have any design direction for government or public agency-type buildings such as a school, and after review, we found that these guidelines best align with what our expectations of design would be for that, so we're expanding that definition. And on page 95, we are adding greater specificity and direction for sign design. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for that. And Planning and Zoning Commission approved these changes, correct?
They did, thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their November 1st meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended approving the proposed changes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about it? And do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1016, an ordinance amending the Coralville Community Plan 2014 Edition by amending the 2016 Coralville West Land Use Area Master Plan as previously amended. This ordinance introduced first consideration by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please. Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Number eight, JARIS addition preliminary plat amendment, and this amendment would add a private sanitary sewer easement and a common access easement to the preliminary plat. And we have Dave Johnson here again to share some information about this.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much more to add to this other than let council know that the plat does conform with the requirements for preparation filing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at the November 1st meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, recommended approval of the plat.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the amended preliminary plat for JARIS addition Coralville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Nguyen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please. Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Number 11, Notice Right of Redemption, and this would be for Lot B in Lantern Park, First Edition. And could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution directing the city attorney to deliver notice of expiration of right of redemption for tax parcel 1006278010. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Kevin, do you want to just give us a quick overview of this?
Sure. Yeah, this is a, if you go down Fifth Street and 20th Avenue, there's a wall down there that had some awful bushes and stuff around there. Basically, that parcel is owned by the development company for Lantern Park, which has long since gone away. 25 years ago, I saw their dissolution paperwork. So there was a, there was a city sidewalk assessment on that property that the assessment's now up to $24,000. So basically, what we did is we, the county had the tax sale certificate, we, they assigned it to us, and we are going to, so I'll give notice after this, and I have to publish it because the company doesn't exist anymore, and then in 90 days, we'll just get title that property, and it'll just be part of the right, or part of the right-of-way for 20th and Fifth Street, and it's kind of a, and actually, the people who have the corner apartment building, that actually blocks their driveway, so in theory, they don't have access. So when we got the access easement, when we got the easement for the road project from that owner, when we decided, we said, when we get this, we will give them an access easement across this parcel, but we'll keep the parcel, other than the access easement to allow legal access to that apartment building without having to go through adverse possession.
Great, thank you for that overview. Does anyone have any questions about this or comments?
Really nobody to notify, but notify, you mean you put it in the paper. You have to do the owners and the city, so I'm going to drop off the notice to Thor, and then I'll publish, it's getting published in the newspaper. That's the. To the owners, which is a dissolved company. It is, I saw the paperwork, it records office in 1998, so that's why nobody's paying the tax. And nobody, nobody wanted the tax sale because you can't do anything with it. It's about 10 feet wide and 10, 20 feet wide, and it's a long parcel. I don't know why it was, it was probably just there for the wall when they did the development there, so. Yeah, I tried to figure out exactly where that lot was, and I. It's hard to, yeah. Why is that sitting there? It's ours now. It'll be ours, yes. In 90 days, it'll be, we'll get a tax deed from the county treasurer for that property.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call. Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, CVB funding agreement. This will provide funding to the Iowa City Coralville Convention and Visitors Bureau to continue attracting, retaining, and providing services for business conferences and sporting events in Coralville. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving.
By notify, you mean you put it in the paper?
I have, you have to do the owners and the city. So I'm going to drop off the notice to Thor and then I'll publish, it's getting published in the newspaper.
To the, the owners, which is a dissolved company.
It is. I saw the paperwork, you know, records of us in 1998, so that's why nobody's paying the tax. And nobody, nobody wanted the tax sale because you can't do anything with it. It's about 10 feet wide and 10, 20 feet wide and it's a long parcel. It, I don't know why it was, it was probably just there for the wall when they did the development there, so.
Yeah, I tried to figure out exactly where that lot was and I.
It's hard to, yeah.
Why is that sitting there? It's ours now.
It'll be ours, yes.
Ninety days.
In 90 days, it'll be, we'll get a tax deed from the county treasurer for that property.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, CVB funding agreement. This will provide funding to the Iowa City Corvo Convention and Visitors Bureau to continue attracting, retaining, and providing services for business conferences and sporting events in Corvo. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Iowa City Corvo Convention and Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2024. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. I'll just start off by saying we really appreciate the work of the CVB, everything that they do to not only attract and, and bring events to our community, but also for all of the work that they do in making those events really special. And they do a great job of showing off our community and just really grateful for their partnership and all of their hard work. Any other questions or comments about this? Okay. Roll call.
Hwin?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, private placement engagement letter. These documents are for Piper Sandler to assist in the private placement of securities to fund the Fifth Street improvements from 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. And we have our finance director, Melissa Christiansen, here to share some information about this.
Thank you, mayor. Council members, I don't have a lot more to add. I guess just to clarify that we're seeking a resolution than to engage Piper Sandler, i.e. Tim, and to solicit banks then in order to obtain some financing for the Fifth Street project.
Great.
Thank you.
The terms are essentially the same as they've been in the past, I assume? This is the first time I remember.
Let's read the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Let's read the resolution and then we'll, we'll chat. Okay. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a private placement engagement letter disclosures and fixed bond, fixed rate bond general description from Piper Sandler and Company. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Okay.
So the terms are, we've dealt with them a long time. They've been a good partner with us. I assume the terms are basically the same as they've been in the past.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Could I have the roll call?
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 14, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam mayor, I would like to ask council to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to U.
Moved by Hwin. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Could I have the roll call?
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 15, city administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just a couple of quick items. This week at the Extreme Arena, we will be hosting the Gable-Donnie Brook. 84 high schools from seven states, wrestling teams will be at the arena. I think it's also noted, should be noted, that half are women's teams and half are men's teams. So I think it's really exciting to have this many high schools that are high quality, have high-quality wrestling teams participating in, in the event. Also, the Isle of Lights is coming up on December 8th to the 10th, starting with the community meal on the 8th and ending on the 10th with all of our listing of, of activities. So go to corvo.com and see how you can participate for that weekend. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I do have a few things. I want to start by just reminding folks that we have some openings for our boards and commissions. So we have three openings for our Community Policing Advisory Board. And one of those positions is to be appointed by Lulak. We have one position on our Civil Service Commission and one position on planning and zoning. So if you're interested in any of those boards, please send in your application. Thor, can you remind me what the deadline is, please?
We have determined.
Okay. All right. So just turn them in, just turn them in, okay? You can go to, two weeks, yes. So we'll go to the city's, you can go to the city's website to learn more about how to apply and to read a little bit more about those different boards and, and what their responsibilities are. But if you're interested in, in getting more involved, this is a great way to do that. Since we are approaching the holidays, I, I wanted to just remind folks about a few programs that we have that can provide a little bit of help for folks that, that might need it, you know, especially during this time of year. I wanted to start by reminding folks about our Neighbors Helping Neighbors program. This is a program that can help folks keep their water on. You can make a donation to that program and the city will, will match those funds. So again, really important, we're coming up on the holidays. It's a, you know, time of year when people might be feeling some financial pinch, so that would be a great way to help your, your neighbors out. There's also a couple of other programs that you can take advantage of. One is the Home Rehab or Emergency Repair Grants. And these are for folks that own or are in the process of purchasing their property. And you can qualify for up to between $6,000 and $12,000 for improvements. And I think one of the things that's really great about this program is that it applies to mobile homes as well. So head over to the city's website to learn more about that if you're interested. And then there is another program with more, some, a mortgage assistance program. And this assists eligible homeowners with mortgage payments or other related property expenses up to $25,000. And again, you can find more information about all of these programs on the city's website. And then last but not least, I wanted to remind folks that today is Giving Tuesday. And there are so many great organizations in our community that are doing great work. I would encourage folks to, to support those organizations today. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report.
Other than wishing Don continued getting better health, I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you. Committee and council members' report. We will start down at this end with councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, madam mayor. Just want to welcome Royce, first of all. Great to have you join the group and looking forward to working with you. Should be fun. I did get the opportunity this afternoon to sit in on a webinar, East Central Iowa Climate Action Planning and Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. So this is the Inflation Reduction Act and, and pretty big money, $5 billion in grants that the county is working on and planning to get. And I certainly hope Corvo might have some activities. A couple that were mentioned included something I've thought a little bit about, which is improving the energy efficiency of county, you know, county buildings. I don't know if this will be the direction this group takes, but certainly opportunities there for Corvo. And they had something sewage, sewer plant capture of greenhouse gases and a plan for that. I'm not sure exactly what technology we're using. I know we've made some improvements out there, but there might be opportunities there. And I'm sure there, there's other that we could potentially buy for and would, would hope we can participate in that if possible. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gross?
Thank you, madam mayor. I guess since I'm kind of winding down my tenure, I want to just give Tim Oswald a huge shout out. This will be my last meeting with him for 16 years. I just want to say, Tim, just thank you all these years for your expertise, your vision, your dedication to the city. I, I don't think we'd be where we are without your help. So I greatly, greatly appreciate all that you've done for Corvo. Thanks. So I have, madam mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Hwin?
Thank you, madam mayor. I just want to remind everyone that the meal is, the community meal is on Friday, next Friday, not this Friday, next Friday. And we do have free vaccine, so flu and COVID vaccine. Come eat with us, 5 to 7 o'clock at the rec center. The menu's going to be Polish comfort food. And we have activity that provided by the rec center, the library, and also the Miriam Girl Club. So come join us. That's all I have.
How do you know which vaccine?
COVID and.
No, but which, which COVID vaccine?
The Pfizer, the next, the newest strain that they have.
Greatest, greatest?
Yeah. I'm not a pharmacist, so I was just like.
I just know if it's Moderna or Pfizer, because I.
The Pfizer.
I think that this, the third one, you shouldn't be mixing. So just so people know that.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, welcome.